Spend our time arguing about the details here in the City Council. We know that Congress will debate and we know that they will modify and we know that the President's first proposal won't necessarily be the last that emerges. But as a City Council, we need to send a message to create the groundswell of support that any measure to provide more health care to the people in the United States will have the ability to pass in Congress. And so, we want to thank Eric Garcetti for his leadership on this item. We are sending that message. The people of Los Angeles demand a national health care plan. And to date, we haven't seen it because the health care system has been corrupted by profit motive. So, this is a small step, but hopefully it will be joined by many other municipalities and other jurisdictions because the people of the United States are very pleased to finally have a President who has the courage to take the shots for those details, to have somebody review each and every word, and yes, criticize him, but stand up and say, "America needs to provide health care to its citizenry." That would improve our economy by increasing productivity, by reducing their sick time from work, by creating a nation that is truly, not just wealthy, but also healthy.
Madam Quick, if you please open the roll on the resolution. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. And we will send that forthwith to the Mayor, and if we can instruct our chief legislative analyst as well to share that with National League of Cities for other cities as well to adopt, and we'll certainly be having a number of conversations with colleagues around the country to pass similar resolutions in their cities. So, thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
The meeting for Friday, August 7th, was held in the San Fernando Valley at the Van Nuys City Hall, where Item 21 was taken under consideration. That's an ordinance that would ban all digital billboards, super graphics, and certain other outdoor signs. Urging an aye vote, Chair of the Planning and Land Use Management Committee, District 1 Council Member Ed Reyes stands to clarify what the new sign ordinance will do.
First, I just want to say that this ordinance is about how we protect all of our communities in the city of Los Angeles. It's about having the ability to essentially define our space. Each area has, I believe, a concern to make sure that we have the capacity to control our environment. So, this is about protection of all communities throughout the city. That being said, what you have coming before you is a substitute motion that should have a number three on it. And essentially, this ordinance makes technical and clarifying language changes. I gotta wear glasses now. To the ordinance currently before you as Item Number 24 on the special meeting agenda. Importantly, it clarifies that the conversion of existing outside signs to digital displays is prohibited. So, that language is included, and I appreciate your support. I believe it'll make the city stronger and its ability to advocate for its communities. I want to make sure we all understand that this is a ban. It's not a moratorium. It's a ban. So, I want to make that very clear for the record and to again be explicit about the request, so I wish to move that the ordinance marked three, which should be on your desk, it's an ordinance, be substituted for the ordinance on the file. This ordinance makes technical and clarifying language changes to ordinance currently before you as Item Number 21 on the special meeting agenda. So importantly, it clarifies that the conversion of existing outside signs to digital displays is prohibited. So, I just want to say that for the record and be very clear about that. Also, thank Councilman Rosendahl and my colleagues for their support.
Saying we still have a lot of work to do, Council Member Richard Alarcon has questions for the Assistant City Attorney.
This is, I think, a very significant day for the city of Los Angeles. This motion is a long time coming. This ordinance is a long time coming. We have plenty of signs out there. We don't need more. The question is, how do we manage the portfolio? And while we are banning new signs from being legally posted, we still have a lot of work to do, and that is particularly with regard to the enforcement piece. If we don't get our enforcement act together, then what would stop somebody from posting illegal signs that are new? So, we have a lot of work to do. We recognize that, but this is an action that I think is good for Los Angeles for the long term. It puts us in a better position to work with the existing sign operators and manage them in a way that is much better for the communities around Los Angeles. So, I want to thank the City Attorney's Office for tailoring this in a way that I think will be beneficial to the city of Los Angeles and also setting the issue of billboard blight in a context that I believe will be much more legally defensible and also produce better results in a more expeditious way. The challenge is, of course, for Mr. Reyes, who is going to have to take those 17 amendments of the other ordinance. Maybe he can pull a few out because of this, I don't know, and bring that back as quickly as possible to bring to the people of Los Angeles the full menu of opportunities that we have to improve the billboard blight situation in Los Angeles and eliminate it from our myths.
Saying enough is enough, and despite being on medical leave, District 11 Council Member Bill Rosendahl joins his colleagues to cast his vote for the new sign ordinance.
For the record, our President, Mr. Garcetti, asked me to come in even though I'm on sick convalescent leave, just having had surgery and I'm recovering, but I came in because you needed 12 votes today to get this thing done and get it done now before we go into recess. I see the room is packed with lobbyists, so we know the special interests of the billboard community is heavily represented, and we also see Dennis Hathaway and a whole lot of community people that have taken a deep interest in it all, and I want to thank everybody for being here for this important moment. I came because it's time for us to say enough is enough is enough on the billboard business. It's time for this to go into place, keep the moratorium tight. Mr. Garcetti is right. Ms. Perry has issues that have to be resolved. Mr. Reyes has spoken to me about it, and of course, my great new colleague Paul Coretts across the 405, CD5, because we know how much we get assaulted by the billboards in CD 11, 5, 4, and a couple of others. Some of us feel it's visual blight, others feel it's a safety issue, and we also know we're getting a very poor revenue stream, folks, off of these billboards, and we've got to get a revenue stream, not just a placement buck, but every time they flip and they have flipped to this digital, there's money they're getting, we're getting nothing, and we as a city need to figure out a good revenue stream concept for the whole billboard concept. But speaking for CD 11 at this particular point, I remember that Saturday when Dennis Hathaway and a group of constituents and I started counting the billboards in our district. We found 563 billboards, 20 were digital, and 34 were illegally put up, and we put the energy going forward to get a handle on what is in our district and get a better understanding of where we are as a city and where we need to go forward. So, I'm here today to hopefully be the 12th vote to move this ordinance forward. Thank you, Mr. President.
Asking for clarification on exactly who the ordinance will affect, District 9 Council Member Jan Perry explains why she is voting yes, even though she has some concerns on the signage ban.
It seems that I am between a rock and a hard place because I'm attempting to resolve some issues. Mr. Michelson has been, I have to say, Mr. Michelson has been absolutely tremendous in addressing concerns and answering questions, and for clarification, just so I make sure that we put this on the record, because it's important to the people in places like the Historic Core on Central Avenue, on off-site, small neighborhood-serving retail, to know that this will not affect them. Am I correct, Mr. Michelson?
Thank you, Council Member Perry. You are correct. This ordinance does not impact or affect onsite signs, so retail establishments who are advertising their business and doing so in an onsite capacity, this does not affect their ability to do so. That is correct.
The reason that I wanted you to say that on the record is because some of the neighborhood-serving retail spaces at the street level that are struggling to survive, especially now, were told by Building and Safety inspectors over the last several months that they had to remove their signs, signs in their windows, signs, you know, just signs, and, you know, it was very, very bad for the small business owners. So, the fact that this doesn't apply is very, very good news, and I'm glad that you clarified that. I would really like very much to vote no today, but I know that if I do vote no today, then it'll carry over and this will continue, and I want to say to Mr. Rosendahl how much I appreciate him coming in, and as soon as we're done, I hope he goes back home and goes back to bed, where he should be getting some sleep. And again, I want to, I've registered my concerns to all of you on the record, and I have a lot of confidence in Mr. Reyes in taking our some 17 pending motions and moving them forward as we come back from recess. And so, I will go ahead and do the affirmative act today with a great deal of hesitation and an enormous amount of concern that's still hanging in the air, and I have a little faith in my colleagues. And again, I need to thank Mr. Michelson because I think without his very pure advocacy, I don't think that I could reach this point today. But I made my points for the record. They're there for public consumption, and I'm ready to move on this.
Thank you. And with that, let's go ahead and please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. We'll send that forthwith without objection.
With the unanimous vote, the council also issued instructions to the City Attorney to ensure the law will go into effect right away. You can watch City Council meetings live or view past meetings by going to the city's website at lacity.org and follow the instructions for video on demand. We invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall or go to the Van Nuys City Hall and participate via video teleconferencing. And now, those of you living in the Harbor area can go to the San Pedro City Hall located at 638 South Beacon Street, Room 700 in San Pedro, and also participate in council meetings via video teleconference. Remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 a.m. Council Week in Review can be seen Monday through Friday at 9:30 a.m. and 6:30 p.m. and on Sundays at 9:30 a.m. That concludes our program for the week ending August 7th, 2009. On behalf of Jack Pope, Joey, and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Mike Hoffman. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
In the aftermath of a disaster, you may not be able to rely on your knowledge of your home. You might also not be able to rely on your guide dog. The dog may be injured, frightened, confused, panicky, and/or disoriented. Be prepared to calm your dog and to keep it confined and securely niched and/or harnessed. If you use a king, remember to keep it readily available to assist you around hazards and obstacles. Keep a spare by your bed and at all exit doors, as well as a spare leash for the dog. Ensure that your guide dog is microchipped and that their license and identification tag have current contact information. Guide dogs can accompany you to an emergency shelter. Just as you need to prepare an emergency kit for yourself, you need to have one for your dog. Ensure you have enough water, food, any medications they may require, and a first-aid kit. A blanket or rug and favorite toy may help calm them as well. Keep your veterinarian's name and number in the kit. Vaccination records may be required at the shelter. Only you know what can prepare and assist you and your family during a disaster. Are you prepared? For additional information, please contact the Department on Disability or the Emergency Management Department by calling the numbers on the screen or by dialing 311.
I'm an Ayahgar yoga teacher here in Los Angeles, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35, Our City, Our Channel. Namaste.
I'm an Ayahgar yoga teacher here in Los Angeles, and you're watching LA City View,
The meeting for Friday, August 7th, 2009, was held in the San Fernando Valley at the Van Nuys City Hall, where Item 21 was taken under consideration. That's an ordinance that would ban all digital billboards, super graphics, and certain other Urging an aye vote, Chair of the Planning and Land Use Management Committee, District 11 Council Member Ed Reyes stands to clarify what the new sign ordinance will do.
First, I just want to say that this ordinance is about how we protect all of our communities in the city of Los Angeles. It's about having the ability to essentially define our space. Each area has, I believe, a concern to make sure that we have the capacity to control our environment.
Mr. Parks. Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Smith, and Mr. Zine are excused today, and we do have a vacancy in Council District 2, so we will be at a barrequorum. This is in our second-last meeting before the summer recess of two weeks. So, Mr. Parks, if you'll please join us, and we will begin shortly. Thank you, everybody, for your patience. [Music] Madam Clerk, we have 10 members. If you'll please call the roll.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Han, Weezer, Coretz, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendale, Smith, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 10 members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Mr. Coretz moves, and Mr. Cardenas seconds, without objection. Those will be approved. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Han moves, and Mr. Alarcon seconds, without objection. Those will be approved as well. If we can run through the agenda, please.
First items on the agenda are items noticed for public hearing. Item number one, I believe, has cards on that item.
Let's go ahead, and we'll call that special for cards from the public.
And 2 through 4 are also public hearing items, and the recommendation for council action is to open the hearing and continue the hearing in ordinances to be presented on September 2nd.
Okay. If there's no objection, we'll go ahead and open those public hearings, continue those till the 2nd, and there are no cards from the public on those today. Next items.
The next group of items are building and safety items, and the department has advised that items 5, 8, 9, 11, 12, and 14, and 15 can be received and filed inasmuch as the liens have all been paid on those.
Okay, let's go ahead and receive and file those if there's no objection.
And then that would leave before councils 6, 7, 10, and 13 to confirm the liens.
Okay. Anybody wishing—do we have cards from the public on any of those?
No.
Okay. Anybody wishing to call any of those special? If not, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, those are approved. Next item, please.
Next item is item number 16, and that's a finding of public convenience on necessity in Council District 12, and the recommendation for council action is to grant the application on that.
Okay, in concurrence with Council District 12, we will move that, and let's go ahead and prepare the roll on item number 12, and please tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Sorry, 16. 16. Thank you, that is approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items 17 through 42, and there are ordinances on 17 and 18, and there will not be 12 today, and a report has been submitted on item number 26.
Okay. Colleagues, any specials for these items? We have items 17 right now through 42. Mr. Alarcon.
As far as item 42, I'd like to have that referred to the Jobs Committee.
Okay. Is there any objection to referring number 42 to the Jobs Committee? If not, go ahead and refer that there. Mr. Parks?
31 and 40 special for Mr. Weezer.
31 and 40. Okay. Are there specials?
We're going to deal with 23 on open agenda.
Okay.
Because that's just merely making a—it's a judgment that's going to the court while the city appeals.
Okay.
And, Mr. President, I also understand on item number 29 that Mr. Wesson has an amendment in the works on that one.
Okay, let's hold that on the desk until we have the amendment, so item 29. There are no other special items. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll on the balance, and please tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved, except for the two ordinances which will carry over one week, and that'll take us through our September meeting. Next items, please.
Yes, and I'm sorry, Mr. President, the first meeting back is September 1st.
September 1st, thank you.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 43 through 68. 10 votes are required for consideration, and I understand there was a request to continue item number 61 to September 22nd.
Is there any objection to continuing 61? If not, let's go ahead and do that. Mr. Alarcon?
See, item 64 is also related to banks and enterprise zones, and I'd like to have that matter referred to the Jobs Committee as well.
Okay, we'll refer that as well. There's no objection. Ms. Han?
Let's call item 43 special, please.
43 for Ms. Han. And, Mr. Coretz?
I'd like to ask that item 55 be referred back to Audits and Government Efficiency Committee.
Okay, item 55. There's no objection. We'll refer that to AGE. And any other specials? Yes, Ms. Han?
Actually, I'd like to—could we note and file 66, please?
66. Ms. Han moves to note and file.
Receive, whatever.
And, Mr. President, you have cards on a number of these items, 45, 47, 48, 49, 53, 59, and 67.
Okay. We'll call those special for cards from the public, and if we can go to the next items, please.
Do you wish to take a vote on the items that are left?
I'm sorry, yes. Let's take up the balance, please. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
44 will carry over till September 1st. The others are approved, and all items will go forth with colleagues this week. Next items, please.
Next items, Mr. President, are the closed session items, and there's a request on item number 71 to continue that matter to September 2nd.
Okay. Is there any objection, colleagues, to continuing item 71? If not, we'll go ahead and do that. Mr. Alarcon?
See, item 64 is also related to banks and enterprise zones, and I'd like to have that matter referred to the Jobs Committee as well.
Okay, we'll refer that as well. There's no objection. Ms. Han?
Let's call item 43 special, please.
43 for Ms. Han. And, Mr. Coretz?
I'd like to ask that item 55 be referred back to Audits and Government Efficiency Committee.
Okay, item 55. There's no objection. We'll refer that to AGE. And any other specials? Yes, Ms. Han?
Actually, I'd like to—could we note and file 66, please?
66. Ms. Han moves to note and file.
Receive, whatever.
And, Mr. President, you have cards on a number of these items, 45, 47, 48, 49, 53, 59, and 67.
Okay. We'll call those special for cards from the public, and if we can go to the next items, please.
Do you wish to take a vote on the items that are left?
I'm sorry, yes. Let's take up the balance, please. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
44 will carry over till September 1st. The others are approved, and all items will go forth with colleagues this week. Next items, please.
Next items, Mr. President, are the closed session items, and there's a request on item number 71 to continue that matter to September 2nd.
Okay. Is there any objection, colleagues, to continuing item 71? If not, we'll go ahead and do that.
And then, would you like to hold the rest of the closed sessions on the desk?
Yes, please. Let's hold those on the desk as well.
And that would take council back to the items called special and public comment.
Okay. We'll move to a public comment now. As I mentioned, we have—yes, Mr. Labange?
We have 10 members, and the interest allow everyone to speak. I move that public comment be a one-minute public comment, and if people need a little more time to complete their statement, they can. That way, all agenda items could be heard in public comment.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there any objection?
Check that, Janice.
Ms. Han, seconds up. Okay. So, we have—today, we have about 40 cards, so if there's no objection, we'll move to a minute per speaker then for today because of that volume. Our first speaker is Nancy Campeau. Welcome, Ms. Campeau, and then Davina Lombardo will follow after that, and then Dr. Clyde Williams. Come on forward to the podium. We'll set the clock. And we'll set the clock there at a minute for you to help you out. And appreciate the group that is here on the 710 freeway today, and thank you for taking time out of your day to be here. Ms. Campeau, go ahead.
Thank you, President Garcetti, and council members. Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Nancy Campeau, and I live in the Mount Washington Highland Park neighborhood in northeast Los Angeles. My neighbors and I are here to inform you of a matter which would destroy our neighborhoods, and we are here to petition you to prevent it. You may or may not know that Caltrans is gearing up to put a 710 freeway extension through the historic and cohesive neighborhoods of northeast Los Angeles. Our community knew nothing about this plan until last Thursday. We were so shocked and horrified at what was intended for our neighborhoods that with only three days' notice, over 200 residents showed up at a neighborhood meeting last Thursday and started passing a petition out neighbor to neighbor. After only four days, Thursday night through Monday night, we have gathered 518 signatures and still counting. Our petition asks that the council to unanimously—oh.
That's a minute. You want to finish your sentence, and we'll go on?
Unanimously and forcefully sign a resolution barring any 710 extension whatsoever—
Thank you very much.
—within L.A. city borders or any neighboring cities.
Thank you very much, Ms. Campeau, and thank you for your understanding of the time. Davina Lombardo is our next speaker. After that is Dr. Clyde Williams. Good morning.
Good morning, Council President Garcetti and other council members. I am Davina Lombardo. I have been a resident of Mount Washington for 23 years, 2 months, and Mount Washington is a very beautiful neighborhood. It's last green, the only one left in L.A., and you are going to help me keep my home. You are the strongest, the most powerful council members in the whole California. I'm sorry, I'm very nervous.
You're doing great.
I know my neighbors by their first name. I see people walking, jogging every day. They love the neighborhood. So, you are going to help us preserve it. There will be no freeway in our home, no 710 freeway, no 710 freeway. Caltrans is not going to take that away from us. You are going to help us with that. And I want to correct Nancy, there's not 518, there's 1,147 as of last night.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you, President.
May I read the petition?
Why don't you hand it to Sergeant Arms? We have to keep it to a minute per person just to be fair, but we'll make sure that one of the sergeants-at-arms collects it from you, if we can have somebody come forward. So, just hang out right there. We'll make sure that they collect it from you. Dr. Clyde Williams is our next speaker. After that is Peter Hirsch. Dr. Williams?
Stop the 710. Dr. Clyde Williams, 4115 Barrett Road, El Sereno, northeast L.A., 30-year resident of El Sereno. We're supporting the rest of northeast L.A. also. We are petitioning our government, you, to stop the 710. We have submitted, and we are going to submit additional copies of our petition, our resolution draft. The basic element is we wish the council hereby to express its opposition to the tunnel or any other alternative for the 710 between the I-10 and the 210 in Los Angeles. We are also going to be petitioning our state assemblymen, our senators, our county board of supervisor, and Mr. Mossera. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Peter Hirsch is our next speaker. After that, we can hand it to Sergeant Arms right there, and we've had—I think we all have had gotten copies, just so you know, they're on our desks as well. So, then Bill Sherman is our next—Bill Sherman is our next speaker after Mr. Hirsch, and then Joyce Chang following him. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. I was at the August 4th Steering Committee meeting with Caltrans, and there were 22 members of the Steering Committee, and we heard from everybody, and with the 22 people that were recommended to Caltrans, they actually had one person who was in favor of putting the 710, and a person who was on the border, and the rest of the people did not want it representing the people. And they told the Steering—the Steering Committee told Caltrans, "We don't want this project," and they just said, "Hey, we're going ahead and doing it," which doesn't make the Steering Committee really an equal force here. I think we have to look in the future. We have to really look beyond what's going on right now. If you've traveled on the freeways of Los Angeles, you know that one way from 7 o'clock in the morning to 10 o'clock, there's a bunch of traffic going into downtown, or one way or another, or Santa Monica, or like Beverly Hills, like you mentioned. And on the other side, there's no one. I mean, Caltrans has this big property of freeway. Have they ever thought of doing variable lanes, and maybe doing something that, you know, opens up traffic, or even the thought of maybe—
Thank you, sir.
—one-way freeways?
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments this morning. Thank you. Bill Sherman is our next speaker. Joyce Chang after that, and then William Mallor.
My name is Bill Sherman. I live in the city of South Pasadena. I am the chairman of the South Pasadena Transportation Commission. I encourage the city council of Los Angeles to unite with cities of South Pasadena, Pasadena, Glendale, and La Cañada-Footridge in strong opposition to any extension of the 710 freeway. The proposed tunnel is not a solution to the traffic problems in Los Angeles County, and is detrimental to the health and well-being of the citizens of these counties. The extension and tunnel is not in the best interest of the cities of Los Angeles, the county of Los Angeles, or the state of California. This SR710, this white elephant, must be stricken from the state highway maps. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Joyce Chang is our next speaker. William Mallor after that, and then Joyce—sorry, Jose Roque. Okay.
Hello, my name is Dr. Joyce Chang. I'm a one-year resident of Mount Washington. I oppose the 710 extension. Los Angeles is, right now, the worst U.S. city for air quality, and is one of, if not the worst, for traffic congestion. The last thing the city needs is yet another multi-lane above-or-below-ground freeway. Our neighborhood is already surrounded on all sides by freeways. A recent SCAG study indicates no improvement anywhere by 2030, and only for a few years. This project was not requested by our community. Caltrans's 710 is a straightforward issue. It benefits none of us and will hurt a great many of us. If the elected representatives are unable to take the strongest stand against this project, then we can only be led to conclude that they do not represent us, but rather outside interests. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Dr. Chang, William Mallor is our next speaker, and then Jose Roque, and then Shana Grace.
Thank you, President Garcetti, council member. My name's Dr. Mallon. I'm a 20-year physician at L.A. County USC and a 15-year resident of Mount Washington. The proposed 710 extension with—that people are enamored with, with tunnels through northeast Los Angeles, is really not good for the communities. Tunnels have increased rates of COPD and cancer near their portals. The portals will be 6,000 to 7,000 feet in length, and so it won't really be underground. It benefits no one in the neighborhood, simply the port of Los Angeles. This is not about moving civilians. It's about moving commerce. Move commerce on trains, not through neighborhoods that have been established for years. This is not about moving people, and it will harm those neighborhoods. Why should we sacrifice and put up with the cancer risk? And for those who love tunnels—I'm from Boston—I refer you to the Big Dig. That was no big success.
Thank you very much. Jose Roque is our next speaker. Shana Grace, and then after that is, I think it's Elia Aguilar.
Good morning, council members. I'm Jose Roque. I'm a resident of Highland Park. I'm here to express my opposition to the extension of the 710, and urging the city to do anything they can to stop the extension of 710. Highland Park has historically been neglected for any investment, and Caltrans can use some of those funds to build better schools, better parks, and other investments that will improve the quality of life of Highland Park residents. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Shana Grace?
My name's Shana Grace, and I'm usually here before you as an affordable housing advocate. I have been a resident of Terrace 49 for the past 40 years, when it was known as Highland Park. Now, my neighborhood is called Mount Washington. I know my neighbors, and I'm asking you not to devastate a community and destroy potentially thousands of homes and add to the already epidemic housing crisis in our city, but to come up with a green solution that will create jobs, that will be healthy to our cities and our city and our neighborhood, and to really work together with the other localities to stop no on 710. Come up with a better solution. Use the light rail that is here and develop another one. Use the traffic in a coordinated way. We have too much happening that works against us. Let's work together for a healthy Los Angeles.
Thank you very much, Ms. Grace. Ms. Aguilar? Elia Aguilar? After that will be Daniel Tapia and Michael Goldberg.
Well, I've lived in—
Good morning.
I've lived in Mount Washington for 45 years, and it's a beautiful place, and we don't want to destroy it. So, I say no on 710.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Daniel Tapia, and then Michael Goldberg, and Peter Lucy. Good morning.
Good morning, Jose. I'm a resident of Mount Washington and neighborhood over the 30 years, and the only thing I want to say, please stop 710. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for taking the time to be here, too. Michael Goldberg, and then Peter Lucy, and then Alan Longacre. Good morning.
Thank you. I'm a resident of Mount Washington for about 15 years. I'm an artist in the community, and northeast Los Angeles is really becoming a heavily—it's always been an artistic community, way back to the American Indians, the whole Arroyo Seaco. Put the mic to my mouth. Thank you. The Arroyo Seaco has always been a creative community, and it's just recently, over the past few years, has grown into a thriving arts community. And this proposed tunnel for the 710 will take out a number of gallery spaces, independent gallery spaces. I was once an independent gallery owner and operator. It's a very hard thing to do in any neighborhood. In northeast Los Angeles, I think this tunnel will devastate this—our community, my community, and all these people's community. And I find it really disturbing that we can find—we can't find $20 billion to cut a budget gap in our state, but we can find $20 billion from outside sources to fund—
Thank you, sir.
—a new freeway.
Thank you very much. Peter Lucy is our next speaker. After that is Alan Longacre and Michael Goldberg. I just heard from—so, Maria Leon. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, councilman. I'm a 20-year resident of Mount Washington, and I oppose this extension through our community northeast Los Angeles, and I urge the city of Los Angeles not to be seduced by a public-private partnership that would finance a toll road or by harbor fares that would be paid to move goods through our neighborhood, the very precious northeast corner of Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Alan Longacre, and then Maria Leon, and then Elizabeth Carkins.
Good morning. My name's Alan Longacre, and I've been a resident of Mount Washington since 1967. It's an absolutely delightful neighborhood, not unlike the Hollywood Hills, and it's full of residents like me who have been there for a long time and maintain our homes. This thing would absolutely destroy the quality of life. I must say that I'm pleased to be here today to request help from my government rather than protesting them picking on me. We really need your help to stop this boondoggle, and I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Longacre. Maria Leon, and then Elizabeth Carkis, and Carmen Tapia.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here to speak for my neighbors. I am a resident of Highland Park, which is Mount Washington. I've been there for 35 years. I am concerned that a lot of people will lose their homes, and the highway will be a hazard risk to our health. I want the 710 stopped. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. And my apologies if I mispronounced your last name. Is it Carkis or Carkins?
Yes. Good morning, everyone. I've lived in Mount Washington for 36 years. My son born in that house, and I do not want to destroy the neighborhood. They grow up, and they grew up a very fine people, and also I against any freeway going through. We are close to four freeways. There is no reason, and that church that they rebuilt, it was a very small wooden-framed church. Now it's beautiful, so please, we love the neighborhood, and the kids want to come back to live there. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Carmen Tapia? After that is Andrea—
Good morning, everybody.
partnership that would finance a toll road or by harbor fares that would be paid to move goods through our neighborhood, the very precious northeast corner of Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Alan Longacre, and then Maria Leon, and then Elizabeth Kirkens.
Good morning. My name's Alan Longacre, and I've been a resident of Mount Washington since 1967. It's an absolutely delightful neighborhood, not unlike the Hollywood Hills, and it's full of residents like me who have been there for a long time and maintain our homes. This thing would absolutely destroy the quality of life. I must say that I'm pleased to be here today to request help from my government rather than protesting them picking on me. We really need your help to stop this boondoggle, and I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Longacre. Maria Leon, and then Elizabeth Kirkus, and Carmen Tapia.
Good morning. I'm here to speak for my neighbors. I am a resident of Highland Park, which is Mount Washington. I've been there for 35 years. I am concerned that a lot of people will lose their homes, and the highway will be a hazard to our health. I want the 710 stopped. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. And my apologies if I mispronounced your last name. Is it Kirkus or Kirkens?
Yes. Good morning, everyone. I've lived in Mount Washington for 36 years. My son born in that house, and I do not want to destroy the neighborhood. They grow up, and they grow up a very fine people. And also, I against any freeway going through. We are close to four freeways. There is no reason. And that church that they rebuilt, it was a very small wooden-framed church. Now it's beautiful, so please, we love the neighborhood, and the kids wants to come back to live there. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Carmen Tapia. After that is Andrea...
Good morning, everybody. I'm a resident of Mount Washington for the last 30 years. I will regret the extension of the 710 because many people is going to be out of their homes. Some of them just bought it, and they owe more than what they... They don't have equity, in other words, so they're going to be really, really in bad shape. I just want to let you know that please help us stop the 710 freeway.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Andrea Jaisakara, and then Wally Schaub.
My name is Andrea Jaisakara. I'm a seven-year resident of Mount Washington Elementary, I mean, Mount Washington Community.
It's a long time in primary school.
Yeah. A longtime resident of West LA, pushed out because of housing prices. So proud to be a member of that community. As you can tell, all these people have lived here for so long, and that's what's made it a great community in the city. I am here to impress on you to please stop any 710 extension, above or underground. It will not benefit the community, it will not benefit our children. I'm a public school teacher. We need to think of them, we need to follow our president, whose lead is for green energy, an alternative, mass transit, something that will help this city be a big city in the state, in the country. We need to be thinking forward, not backward. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. Wally Schaub is our next speaker. After Mr. Schaub will be Ayel Partis, and then Elijah Carter. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Wally Schaub. I'm a 20-year resident of northeast Los Angeles, and I'm here to ask the city council to please help us stop the 710 extension.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Ayel Partis, Elijah Carter, and then Ronald Hyde.
Good morning, everybody. I hope everybody listens, because it seems like half of you don't even hear us, and you are here for us, and this is our voice, and this is our time to voice it, and you still don't listen. And so I am here by requesting that you are representing us. We don't want this freeway up or below. There are many reasons, everybody mentioned them, and I'm not going to mention them again, but they are all valid, and this project is absurd. There is no money in the state, and yet you are going to waste it on an unnecessary project. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Elijah Carter is our next speaker. After that is Ronald Hyde, and then Maria Hyde. Good morning, sir.
May I have this statement into the record?
Sure. We'll make sure Sergeant Armstead's staff.
My name is Elijah Carter, and I am a resident of Terrace 49 and Highland Park of the last 39 years, the majority of my life. I wanted to recommend to our leadership that they consider two principles for dealing with traffic issues, and this issue in particular. Kiss, keep it simple and sustainable. Multimodal and low build is small and sustainable. Small and beautiful. Multimodal and low build is simple and sweet, meaning optimize all traffic avenues currently available. Do you want to be responsible for a huge colossal project that could collapse under its own weight? A 710 tunnel that ends up costing 10, 15, 20 billion dollars or more to build that is shut down because they can't afford to maintain it? Estimated maintenance cost of $1 billion a year. Will that really sustain the safety and environmental features and gadgets? Or would it be too big to fill? When was the last time you heard that? Do you really want to be hostage to a public-private project that you can't afford to maintain?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Ronald Hyde is our next speaker. And after Ronald Hyde is Maria Hyde, and then Elizabeth Espino. Is Ronald Hyde here? Going once, going twice? Okay, is Maria Hyde? Okay. The Hides are hidden? Maria Hyde? That's all right. If they come back while we're here, we'll get them in. Is Elizabeth? Elizabeth Espino? If you'd like to come forward, is our next speaker. And then after Elizabeth is Veronica Pedregón.
Hi, how are you doing?
Good.
I've been a resident of Terrace 49 for 30 years this October. I know all of my neighbors, most of them have been there for more than I have. I've got people who have served as secondary parents here. I moved to the neighborhood when I was nine years old. I'm watching Elijah's children grow up in the neighborhood. His family owns more than one house on the block. Mine isn't the only neighborhood affected by this, but I learned about this last week. I don't know about it in extensive detail, but what I do know is that I love my neighborhood. The mailman knows my dog's name. I don't have a speech prepared. The transient down the street that's affected by at least one of these connections knows my dog's name and my parents. The guys at the Taco Wagon on Ewok Boulevard. I know friends in Pasadena. I have family in Mount Washington above me. I have friends in Highland Park. It's my neighborhood, and I have a broken window on my car. I feel safe in my neighborhood. I can walk through my neighborhood, and I see people walk their dogs.
Thank you, ma'am.
There's a park that I don't get a chance to go to.
We've got to try to keep it two minutes each, but we appreciate your comments, and it's better than even a prepared speech, so don't worry. Thank you. Thank you very much. Veronica Pedregón is next. Excuse me if I butchered that name, too. Veronica Pedregón? And then, oh, Pedregón. I see, and then Abigail Pedregón, too. Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
Fine. I've been a resident of Mount Washington for 38 years, and my sister just had a daughter. I would like to see her grow up in that neighborhood, and I don't think the 710 is going to make a difference. So please stop the 710 from coming in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Abigail Pedregón is our next speaker. Would you like to speak, ma'am? Abigail Pedregón? And then after that is Basus Gabrielle.
Good morning. My name is Abigail Pedregón, and I live in Terrace 49, Mount Washington, for 30 years, and I don't want 710. Please, I don't want it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Pedregón. Basus Gabrielle is next, and then Maryam Abdu.
Good morning. My name is Basus Gabrielle. I'm from here, from St. Mary Church. Please stop 710 because it's going to ruin the church, and it's going to ruin the neighborhood. Thank you for your help.
Thank you very much. Maryam Abdu.
Okay, good morning, President Garcetti and council members. Sorry. Okay. I don't live in the neighborhood, but I do go to the church. I've been going to the church for 20 years. I'm 20 years old. And I just wanted to let you know that if you do approve of the 710 freeway, I won't have a church to go to. I pretty much don't have another church next to my house. We have over 400 families, not including kids, I mean, including, like, not including kids or, you know, children or whatever. We have activities at our church every day of the week for our youth. By taking away the church, you're sending out a message that religion isn't important. And the community, we know, sorry, I'm nervous, but I know the community, and they know me, and I've been there my whole life. I was born in the church, and all I'm asking is to just consider not to take away the 710 freeway. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Did either of the Hides come back? The Hides? Nope? Okay. Those are the last cards for the 710. We have other public comment cards as well. Thank you. I know that we can't respond in any great detail because it's not on the agenda today, but it affects all of our communities, including ones that I represent, and I very much appreciate your comments. It's in Echo Park. They proposed doing drilling to test there, too, where I live, so I'm very sympathetic, and thank you, and we will look forward, Mr. Weezer, myself, Mr. Reyes, on taking appropriate action. So thank you for coming down here today, and your voice does matter. We really appreciate it. We'll next go to Solidad Garcia, who is in San Pedro. And our apologies, Ms. Garcia, that we only have a minute today because of the volume. We still have another 20 or 25 cards, but a very good morning to you, and thank you for your patience.
Good morning to you, Mr. President, and members of the council. I am from San Pedro. I'm concerned, members of the council, that the two weeks' recess time to prepare or revet the ECAF plan will not be sufficient. It seems that the DWP does not understand why Measure B was defeated. It basically was not because of the green, but because of the way that the lack of public processing. Council members, the energy cost adjustment factor has all the negative reasons for rejection. The ECAF resolution is entitled "Energy Cost Adjustment Factor Cap Modification," yet the DWP-published purpose pamphlet on pages 5 and 6 are really all aimed at maintaining its AA bond rating. Since the resolutions are all about bonds, let DWP go through the process to obtain bonds and its ratings. ECAF does not require anyone's approval. It's a pass-through.
Thank you very much.
A great deal of vetting needs to take place. Ratepayers need to know the reasons.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. And my apologies that it's just a minute today, but I know that you'll email that to us as well. We'll make sure that that gets distributed to all council members, and we appreciate your comments. Madeline Drake is also in San Pedro, and then Judy Scobal is as well. Very good morning to you.
Good morning. My name's Madeline Drake. I am a property owner in San Pedro. I support keeping the current ceiling of .001 on the Energy Cost Adjustment Factor, or the ECAF. The power ECAF would have no accountability and disclosure as to how the money would be spent. The city council would be out of the picture, and there would literally be no oversight on quarterly energy cost increases. In fact, these increases would never go down, they would spiral upward. The DWP financial staff has always assessed their budgetary needs from five-to-10-year projections, have one annual maximum cap. When the council reviews the two DWP resolutions, keep in mind that the community is looking to you for financial respite and a lifeline to the middle class. The council should consider reviewing the ECAF on an annual basis and the base rates yearly, and there should be containment of the ECAF, stay within the governor's directive of green power, balance DWP budgets to include the attainable without hurting the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Judy Scobal is our next speaker, also in San Pedro, and then Daniel Wright here, and council members.
Good morning, President Garcetti and council members. As a resident ratepayer, I support the Coastal San Pedro Neighborhood Council's agenda item to support maintaining the current DWP .001 cap on the Energy Cost Adjustment Factor. I appeal to this council to support ratepayers by your indicating full concurrence on Section 245 of the city charter to exert council jurisdiction and vote for the motion as prepared by President Garcetti, council members Perry and Wesson this coming Friday. Please review the DWP Board of Commissioners' resolution modifying the Energy Cost Adjustment Factor. The reasons are disingenuous. Examine the Electric Rate Ordinance 180127 to restructure the residential tiered electric rates. This is but another means to raise money. Conserving would be implemented by the community without raising rates threefold.
Thank you. I'm sorry that time is up, and I'm sorry for just one minute today, but thank you very much for those comments on the ECAF. We appreciate them very much. Daniel Wright is our next speaker, and then John Walsh will follow. Good morning.
I'm not sure that we have a quorum in the room, Mr. President.
We do, and there's some that can go to the bathroom, and we actually have the speaker in the bathroom to ensure that they can hear, so not a word is missed.
It seems that my time has started.
Go ahead, sir.
Are we going to reset the time?
No, sir. I'll give you the three seconds I spoke, but you raised the quorum issue. That's your public comment and your words.
Daniel Wright, on behalf of the Friends of the Southwest Museum Coalition. Apparently yesterday, while council member Weezer was asking the CAO staff how the Autry Museum might tap economic stimulus funds for private activity bonds to restore the historic Southwest Museum, the Autry was releasing a press release, bombastic and materially fake, claiming that it was the fault of the city, Mr. Weezer, and our coalition, that the Autry withdrew its proposal. We were never opposed to an expansion of Griffith Park, just a portion that made the Southwest Museum redundant. And the issues are too detailed at the moment to go into with the council members. We will work with council on the implications of the Autry's withdrawal of their proposal. There are a number of serious issues that still need to be dealt with, and we appreciate the council's attention and care to this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. We look forward to hearing that, and thank you for all the times you've come here. It's a different day finally, we're going to testify today. Mr. Walsh, good morning.
HollywoodHighlands.org, a big post tomorrow morning. Wake up to it. Welcome to date rape gate, ladies and gentlemen. The mayor's appointee accused of date rape, building and safety, in charge of erections. Well, he was in charge of his own erection, wasn't he? The mayor puts him on administrative leave. He's getting paid. Where is he now? In a downtown hotel, trying to get raping another woman? They don't give a damn up here. I told you recently that people involved with the mayor should get AIDS tests, and you said, are you going to throw me out? Where is he right now? He's an at-will employee. Suspend them with no money. You're firing, right now, paramedics and firefighters, and you have an accused rapist. Well, we know the mayor is a sex addict, and we know that this man is a sex addict and a gentleman.
Mr. President, he should be warned. He's talking about personal matters.
Thank you very much. Your time is up. Thank you very much, Mr. Walsh. All right. Mr. Zuma Dogg is your next speaker. Mr. Zuma Dogg? Mr. Zuma Dogg? Is Mr. Dogg present in the chamber? All right. Mr. Dogg is in Van Nuys? Now we go to Van Nuys.
Oh, Jan, I know what it was. Ms. Perry didn't recognize me. Yes, this is Zuma Dogg, and I'd like to say hello to the city of Los Angeles. My name's David Salzberg, and I'm on the ballot for city council in the Valleys District Two. For the past three years, I've come downtown and spoken out on all the items. Basically, you can say I've been undercover as Zuma Dogg. And I'd like to make a very important announcement. So many people have been concerned about me, and I'd like to say, Zuma Dogg, off the streets. For over the past year, I've been homeless. And you can say, gee, Zuma, he's very, a lot of people say, gee, Zuma, he's smart, he knows so much, he fights so hard, he's come down there, but I don't know, the guy's homeless, he's kind of, you know, extra cranky. Now, I'm, thank you to the people that put me in an apartment. Zuma Dogg now with the campaign manager. I'm sorry, I need to say David Salzberg. By the way, they said they'd support me with campaign flyers and apartments and things, but no more Zuma Dogg shirts. I'm not allowed to do that. No more ski cap and glasses.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Daniel Garcia. Mr. Daniel Garcia? Is Mr. Daniel Garcia present?
Wait for the time to go up? Daniel, I'm here because I'm begging from about the street of my city council, and the city council has cost me $200 in repair for, worship repair for my wife, because there's a pothole everywhere in the city, in my district area, which is Quagmire area, and I want to know, and I want to know who going to pay my $200 worth on damage on the, on the, on the, on my wife worship. Thank you.
It's great to see communities want to come down to the city council to express their concerns, and the first action taken by the council is to limit the opportunity to express themselves. Please remember that same sense of fairness when you discuss commission appointees and eliminate your two-and-a-half-hour dog and pony shows. There's two items today in the Rules and Government Committee. One item relates to AB 83, Senator Fuhr's Good Samaritan bill. The second item relates to SB 94, a bill by Calderon prohibiting foreclosure consultants from false deceptive or misleading statements regarding to modifying mortgage loans. Regarding the Good Samaritan bill, the governor signed that bill on Friday, going into effect immediately. So what action is the city council going to take? And regarding SB 94, if only false deceptive or misleading statements would apply to elected officials, then we wouldn't ever have a quorum. officials, then we wouldn't ever have a quorum here. As usual, council leading from behind, open as a sewer, clear as mud.
Thank you very much. Back to the San Fernando Valley for Rick Nightengale.
Yeah, Rick Nightengale. You know, the 710 was, been planned for years and years and years, and I mean, on intimate domain, it should've been done a long time ago, but I'm really sorry for those people. But let's get back down to the fire department. I don't know, they keep calling up and saying that they should get fair pay and so forth. What they're getting cut is the overtime only. Just the overtime. I knew a fireman that turned around, and he only worked one week a month. He lived in Arizona, so everybody backed him up. He was here for seven days. How would you like the fire department on a rescue coming out to you for seven? He's been on the job for six days, but just at the station, and he's gonna go home in one more day. This is the type of stuff that they do. So, I mean, I'm sorry when these people think that they're cutting people off the fire department. They're cutting the overtime. They've had such a cushy ride the whole time that nobody questioned these people that they do things like this, and now they're turning around and saying that they're cutting all these services, and people are gonna die. I think it's a shame that they're saying that kind of thing. Thank you.
Bruce Darian in the San Fernando Valley in Van Nuys.
Morning, city council. I have Bridge to Nowhere pamphlets for y'all. Pass to the Sergeant of Arms. Wanted to talk today about campaign contributions from Superior Gunite Lakeview Terrace Company to Tony Cardenas, $500. And let's talk about the $3,000 to Wendy Gruel from Richard Weintraub, who bought the Sportsman's Lodge, and who developed out Jerry Parentio's historic and natural resource wetland property in Malibu, and converted it to the, what's called the lumberyard, which used to be Malibu Lumber. This individual, as well as his mother, Roberta Weintraub, contributed to Wendy Gruel, as well as Jack Weiss. We have some Malibu juice money there going to city officials. So basically, the old saying, you know, follow the money when you wanna follow corruption, I think is valid here. Sportsman's Lodge, historic state landmark, the Valleys, one of the Valleys' most important landmarks, been closed down for nine months. Wanted to tear it all down and do whatever with it. So we need to follow the money. Thank you.
Mr. Matthew Dowd in Van Nuys.
Dude, I love that fantastic. I love the red show. All right. I was gonna talk about so many other things, but I just looked at the agenda, the Matthew Dowd, Michael Hunt, item number 23. You've already voted it through, but I just noticed there's a major mistake. Of course, you're making mistakes at every single turn. It says on here, 270,000 deposited with the United States District Court. It's 470,000. That's a substantial difference. It needs to be reconsidered. I wanna have public comment now. That's a massive mistake. Now reconsider the item. It's 470,000. Get the attorney in here. It's ridiculous. That's just stupid. That's the dumbest thing I've ever seen. It's making me crazy. 'Cause we've been here so long, three-and-a-half years fighting this bullshit.
Walter Bectell. Mr. Walter Bectell.
Thank you. I wish that we would be able to get some medical glasses and other things like that, but I still can't afford my glasses now because of what Arnold Schwarzenegger did. But I wanted to say something about the Fort Hotel. They need to comply with the LAHD rulings, and the water over there now is poisoning, poisoning me and other tenants too. I'm getting all kinds of gastrointestinal problems. I wish somebody would say something to them in town to be careful with the water, to flush the lines out after they, quote, "fixed them," unquote. The sober people said that they don't have to comply with the restabilization. That's true, but they still have to comply with the other laws, the health, the fire, and building and safety laws, leading up to the supposed project. And I also wanna suggest that SRO is not the best choice for a management team. You have all kinds of management teams you can use.
Thank you, Mr. Bectell. Mr. Michael Hunt is our next speaker.
Thank you for giving me the one minute. Like Matt Dowd said, that we need to revisit the $270,000. It should actually be 471,000 plus six months' interest would be another $7,800, and an hour of conference calls at $700 an hour. So we're looking at a total of about 480. I'd like the Budget Committee to reevaluate and reassess what they put on here, because the total value was 264, 268. I don't know whether they added the interest because they knew they were gonna lose, but we need to get the total thing corrected here and brought up to 471,000, and reconsider through the Budget Finance Committee. Thank you. My name is Michael Hunt.
Leonard Rose Jr.
Hi. Good evening, board member. I'm here. I heard, I got a letter from the mayor, Tony Bossohla, and he's thanking me for the job there, you know, the things that he wrote to me to make a public comment, you know. And I know that the news got job fair, you know, and muster.com got many jobs there, and lots of businesses hiring you on the news, when you watch Channel 7, Channel 9, Channel 5, you know, and thank you, mayor, for writing me a letter. And then I got Megalov, you know, WW Megalov, California GOB, and that Megalov, they got a sex offender out there, you know. There are gonna be more prisoners, and county jail are gonna be out free, you know, and there are gonna be more, more protected victims, and things are gonna give you guys. Thank you for your time. There you go.
Thank you. I'll have one of the officers come and get that from you. Mr. Mort Allen, is Mr. Mort Allen present? Mort Allen?
Excuse me for being very tired. My phone rang all night last night. I think what's happened with our head of Building and Safety is absolutely unconscionable for somebody to be accused of something without then being fired. I think that, I don't know whether it's legally possible, but this is all about issuing building permits on billboards after the ban, and we gotta make sure that permits are not issued 'cause it will then negate your ban. And this is all about billboards. It's on the major buildings. I think we have to understand at this point that Clear Channel thinks they own City Hall, they own LA Live, they own, and we all know that they're owned by George Bush Senior and Mitt Romney and the Mormon Church, that they think that they actually own the city, and we gotta step in, because who's next? We've lost our police chief, our fire chief, now the head of the Building and Safety, all over billboards. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Our next speaker is Yvonne Michelle Autry. Yvonne Michelle Autry.
Good morning. I'm sure you've already heard, Ms. Perry, a colleague or an associate of yours, and a very highly respected and most productive, well-liked, upstanding young man. Thursday evening, at approximately 6:30, was racially profiled. He was forced to hit the wall, and he was handcuffed for no reason. There was no probable cause. There was no reasonable suspicion. This young man doesn't smoke, he uses no drugs. His name is General Jeff Page. He works with the Street Ball Leagues, he works with the Skid Row Brigade to clean up. He is the CEO of Issues and Solutions. Is this type of institutionalized racism, discrimination, and I would dare say institutionalized white supremacy that has led these police officers to profile and to intimidate, using these intimidation tactics for this young man for no reason? It's the same institutionalized racism that is preventing and blocking your, giving him his settlement and other illegal actions in the city.
Thank you, Ms. Autry. Your time is up. Thank you very much. There are no further speaker cards in the queue. Madam Clerk, what is our next item?
Our next item, Madam President, is item number one, and that was also called Special for Cards.
All right. We will go through the cards now. Our first speaker is Angela Wang. Is there Angela Wang in? We have a large number of cards, and we will, one minute per person.
Good morning. I am the council member of Houson District. In a recent conversation with the Building and Safety Department, they expressed surprise that LAHD is not filtering the list of hotels given to them to properly determine whether they are residential hotels. According to the Building and Safety, if a hotel was built in recent years, the building permit would state hotel. Many years ago, however, hotels were given a generic building permit with a description of hotel apartment. In order to avoid problems with the Building and Safety Department and the issues of hotel building permits, it appears that LAHD is now targeting only the older properties that still have the hotel apartment descriptions, and using the new LA ordinance to force these hotels into residential hotels. When the hotel owner explained to the Chief of Staff, Kathy Godfrey, that the city of Los Angeles will lose the 14% tax if these properties are not fairly evaluated, she said she did not care. She stated the city needs affordable housing.
Following Ashish Patel will be Ashor Patel.
My name is Ashish Patel, and I'd like to share my experience with LAHD. I have a small tourist-based residential, oh, sorry, small tourist-based business located in Councilman Garcetti's area in Hollywood. It was determined residential property. Upon request from the Housing Department, I was forced to spend enormous amount of time to produce evidence for an ordinance that was retrofitted for today that was dated back in 2005. I am a small business owner, and I do not have the time to spend to produce evidence for a law that has been imposed without fully researching which properties actually fall into this ordinance. Finally, a relative of mine was given the same request to give evidence and did not have the same amount of time to fulfill the request. Upon the hearing, we requested our evidence back, and LAHD lost our evidence. Now, I am not sure what they do over there, but this kind of practice is not very affordable for small business owners.
Or is it Ashor? Okay.
Good morning. My name is Ashar Patel. I'm a resident of Mr. Garcia's district. In addition to not being upfront with the public about the cost of these rooms in the newly deserted residential hotel, LAHD has sought any input from the community in which the hotels are being forced to convert. The purpose of the creating of these new residential hotels is to provide housing for the elderly and the disabled.
Sir, if you could just hold this clock for a minute. If you could adjust the microphone so that people can hear you, up a little higher towards your mouth, and then if we could quiet people on the sides so that volume of the speaker can be heard, please proceed and start this clock again.
The purpose of the creating of these new residential hotels is to provide housing to the elderly, disabled, and low-income persons on a permanent basis. This would create many unfortunate issues if such tenants moved in into the neighborhood without creating residential, being informed or asked of the input. During the meeting with the former general housing, she did not answer questions about what happens if a hotel is forced to become a residential hotel, and whether the hotel can be rented on a daily basis. It goes to say, without saying, that many of these smaller hotels will be unable to survive if they are forced to rent only on a monthly basis to low-income tenants.
Thank you very much. Amar Patel.
Good morning. I'm the son of an owner of Jerry's Motel in downtown Los Angeles. I'm a member of Councilman Reyes's district. New LA ordinance, 180175, targets tourist hotels as an answer to the affordable housing crisis. New LA ordinance allows LAHD to designate tourist hotels as residential hotels. This LA ordinance includes findings, one of which relies on faulty information. This so-called, quote-unquote, "survey" of hotels was a billing statement, and if hotel owners objected to the unfair fees, they were forced to pay money or risk legal persecution. Rather than trying to solve these issues, when LAHD was confronted by these facts about the serious survey results, they told all hotel owners to hire lawyers. LAHD admits that it is forcing tourist hotels to become residential hotels so they can collect government funding for the department. LAHD has not been upfront with the public about the cost of these new residential hotel units, which can range from anywhere from 1,100 to...
Thank you very much, sir. Next speaker will be Rafful Bakhto.
Good morning, city council. During a recent meeting with the former LAHD General Manager, Mercedes Marquez, and Councilwoman Jan Perry, Chief of Staff, Kathy Godfrey, the above facts concerning the billing statements, the failure of the LAHD to return numerous phone calls, and the threatening letters from the city attorney's office to the hotel owners were explained to them. Sadly, rather than discussing the issue and expressing the willingness to resolve the dispute, former general manager Marquez issued a shocking response. She said that all hotel owners in Los Angeles should hire lawyers, needless to say, the hotel owners never expected a high-ranking city employee to encourage them. As stakeholders of Los Angeles to seek legal representation, indeed, this would be a waste of valuable resource if LAHD is now forcing the stakeholders and the cities itself to become embroiled in litigation concerning the unfair method used by LAHD to support the new LA ordinance. Thank you.
Mr. Ray Patel. Ray Patel.
Thank you. My name is Ray Patel. I'm president of Northeast Los Angeles Hotel Owners Association. Unfortunately, I have a minute, so I'll be fairly quick and fast. Councilmember Wesson, you asked our association to meet with the LAHD staff to address our concerns of them misapplying this ordinance, where this ordinance was written and passed to preserve existing residential hotels in the city of Los Angeles. The LAHD staff is using this ordinance improperly to convert transient or tourist hotels in Los Angeles, and they mainly targeted the Ma and Pa operations. So we met with them, they heard us, nothing's evolved. We wish there was someone from council staff present to address our concerns at that meeting. Councilwoman Jan Perry, we respect what this ordinance is supposed to do and what you're trying to do. We've gone on record for this, but this ordinance was written to preserve existing residential hotels. The staff at LAHD is improperly applying this, and we need our voice heard, and we need to sit down with many of you and address these concerns. We have met with the former general manager, but she just heard us, and we met with the deputy mayor for housing, and she just heard us. So we need an open dialogue. These are small businesses, these are our dreams, and we don't look forward to them being turned into residential hotels when they're not residential hotels. Thank you.
Mr. Jerry Wang.
My name is Jerry. I'm president of Taiwan Hotel Motel Association of Southern California, and also I own some motel in Los Angeles area. We have a serious concern about this ordinance. A lot of our members received this notice saying their property is a residential hotel, and they do not know this ordinance before. And I think it's really unfair to convert a transient hotel into a residential hotel. Our members are small business people, they have their life savings in this property, working hard, they can, a lot of people, they cannot even come to this meeting. Also, the city will lose a lot of transient occupancy, that tax that can use to build a low-income housing, and also, once a hotel became a residential hotel, the owner has to terminate a lot of employees, like maintenance, like maintenance. The Los Angeles will lose a lot more business employees.
Thank you very much, sir. Laura Lee Blake.
Good morning. Laura Lee Blake from the Asian American Hotel Owners Association, also known as AHWA. I am their vice president general counsel, flew in from Atlanta to address you this morning. We have almost 10,000 members across the country that own 22,000 hotels, almost 40% of the industry. Hundreds of our members years ago moved into Los Angeles to open hotels. They're from Gujarat, India. They invested their life savings and took risks, but they never imagined that what happens today would happen to them. That is, that their transient hotels are suddenly being declared... That is, that their transient hotels are suddenly being declared residential properties. You've heard some of the comments this morning about this process, but let me address very quickly the legal implications of this. California Health and Safety Code 50519 specifically excludes transient hotels from the definition of residential properties. And I can go further...
Thank you very much, ma'am. We'll go to Van Nuys and I'll have this officer come and pick it up. Sergeant Adams will pick that up and we'll put that as part of the official record. We will go to Van Nuys now for Mr. Zuma Dog.
Yes, it's Zuma Dog. I'm going by the name of Dave now because I'm ready for City Council. Can't we do something about these Venice vagrants who come here? Can't we pass some rules to get them out of here? Anyway, I'd like to say thank you so much for Ray Patel for showing up. He's the true leader on this. I'd like to say I blogged about this last year and I came to City Council late last year to put this on the record, and I notified President Barack Obama. The city is being fraudulent here. I believe they're going to be in tons of legal hot water. I hope Carmen Chutovich is aware of this. What the mayor's trying to do, to boost the amount of affordable housing units that he then applies for federal money under affordable housing, it's racketeering. They're taking these hotel mom-and-pop units and they're being blanketly determined to be residential. Many of these don't have kitchens, how could it be residential? And I'm here to say, I'm warning you and urging you. As a City Council member, I hope to take the seat. I want to preserve the general trust against the lawsuits, and this is a big, big problem.
Thank you. Arnold Sachs is our next speaker, and then Matt Dowd will follow.
Good morning, thank you, Arnold Sachs. Another fee being considered. We had Quimby fees supposedly spent on parks, that wasn't done. We had a trash fee increase supposedly spent on hiring new police officers, that wasn't done. New fees from the Planning Department, what will they go for? New fees from residential hotels, for what? After listening to these community people discussing this ordinance being considered, created by LAHD, you can be sure that it's being steered by the CRA, that's the Community Redevelopment Agency. There's part of their 20-year plan to lower the standards in these hotels so that they can come in with redevelopment money and buy them up and convert them into the future. Try and stand strong. You notice why none of these council members are sitting in, they're sending their staff members because they don't really want to get associated with it.
Our next speaker is Matt Dowd in Van Nuys.
Yeah, thank you so much. Look, I got an important message for the City Council, and let me tell you, the city of Los Angeles, this is what they do. They've got 500 attorneys across the road. That's why they're telling you to get attorneys, because they want to involve you. They're vexatious litigants, really, when it comes down to it. And they want you to get involved, and as the attorney said yesterday, when they severed all their relationships with the city because of the exact same reason, the debilitating litigation that they make you get involved with, it's really, it's one of the ways they try and beat you. We beat him. We didn't have an attorney when we filed, so it is possible, and I want you all to know that it's the only thing they understand, is that lawsuit. You need to get there, get it filed, and take him on, because all the talk in committees, I've been to the committees, all the public comment, they don't listen to a word unless it's written on a federal lawsuit.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd. That will close our public comment. Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I wanted to ask Yolanda Chavez to come to the front table here, just to respond to some of the issues very quickly that were raised today. I know in the past, some of the motel owners had expressed frustration about this ordinance having an adverse impact on their businesses. They did meet with Mercedes Marquez prior to her departure. The ordinance does establish a fee for appeal of an LAHD determination regarding the status of a motel unit, whether it's residential or transient. Our HCED committee upheld the intent of this ordinance, and the staff can just take a quick minute to explain what that means, but I stand by that intent. There is a fee that's been established of $988 for appealing a determination, and there is a process through which a challenge can be made, an appeal process. The ordinance provides LAHD the opportunity to charge an administrative fee to process and investigate and appeal. So, Ms. Chavez, if you could just comment on those issues, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. Hold my time. Sure. Good morning, Yolanda Chavez with the Housing Department. First, the goal of this residential hotel ordinance is to preserve residential hotel units. The goal is not to impact the businesses run as residential hotels, but is to preserve and identify those residential hotel units and control the conversion and demolition of the units. There is a very clear process in the ordinance that allows for an appeals process by owners that claim that they are not residential hotels. A residential hotel is residential if 51% of the units are used as a primary resident for those tenants in those units. So, a residential hotel can still have tourist units as well as residential units. And in the determination on these properties, we do determine what is residential and what are tourist units within that hotel. But if 51% or more of those units are residential, then they will be considered residential hotels and would have to comply to the terms of this ordinance if they wish to convert or demolish. In terms of the item before you today, let me have Hakam Mortazai explain what the item before you today is.
Good morning, Councilmen, Councilmembers, Hakam Mortazai, Housing Department. The ordinance that's before you, when the residential hotel ordinance was adopted, it already included in it the various fees for the different stages and processes of the ordinance, except for one, which was the residential hotel unit status determination fee. And it asks that we come back to you with the amount of that fee. This ordinance merely sets the amount for that fee and completes the fee structure for this specific ordinance.
I also wanted to add that the department has met with Mr. Patel several times. The last time was last week on August 5th. We had a very lengthy meeting with him, and where we addressed all of his issues, and we will be sending a report to you as to what that discussion was. We also wanted to stress that in terms of some of the major concerns that Mr. Patel has raised in the initial meetings, we've addressed those by hiring translators, by being very flexible on the type of documentation that property owners can submit as evidence if they're trying to appeal the residential hotel status. We have, you know, we receive documentation from property owners in boxes, and actually, our staff goes through the process of sorting the information to assess whether they're residential. We go through a very lengthy process to determine that. And so, we feel that we're meeting the intent of the ordinance and providing a fair process for appeals on this issue.
Okay. All right, Mr. President, I don't know if there's anybody else in the queue. Okay, great. So, I'll ask for a vote.
Now, there is one.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Alakon.
This is a very troubling item. We have a growing transient population, and we are seeing the growth of people who are living in motorhomes all over the city. In fact, there was an article recently in the newspaper about this occurrence in Oxnard. So, where do these people go when a building is converted?
Now, this ordinance is not about converting the residential hotels. The goal of the ordinance is not to, again, impact the business of the residential hotel business. The goal is to control demolition and conversion of those properties. So, for example, if a property is deemed to be residential, a residential hotel, and they choose to get out of the residential hotel business, they would pay in a luffy or build units off-site. That's the way that they're able to convert or demolish. But this does not, you know, we have, our intent is not to tell residential hotel owners what to do with their properties. The intent of the ordinance is clear, is to basically control the demolition and conversion of these properties.
If I may add, Councilman Alakon, what happens to those individuals who are displaced as a result of any conversion or demolition is that, one, that they receive relocation fees pursuant to that conversion or demolition, and the very funds that a property owner of a residential hotel would have to pay in a luffy, or the building that they must build to house those individuals, is the way that those individuals can therefore be accommodated in terms of their displacement, because the funds that they pay goes into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
I reckon the intent of the ordinance was well-meaning, there's no question about that. That was why we did this. The question is, moving forward in this new economy, have we been able to assure that the people that are forced out of their residence find another place? What's the vacancy rate? And are they having to pay higher rent someplace else?
We have not had a residential hotel convert or demolish since the ordinance was enacted. So, we have not faced that issue. And their occupancy rates are actually pretty high.
The, pardon me?
Their occupancy rates.
No, I'm talking about the vacancy rates, so that there is an available transition for these people. If it were to happen, would they have a place to go to and would they be able to afford it with the money that we provided? Because now, the rents are, if anything, they're being jacked up.
Well, that's very challenging, you know, for anyone who's trying to find affordable housing in the city, as you know.
If it's challenging, then maybe we need to modify it. Maybe we need to review it and modify it. And I know you said there's no conversions. Well, I don't want one to happen and have hundreds of people out, although they may have a check in their pocket, they may not have a place to stay. So, I think we should, we may want to take a look to see whether there are any necessary amendments. I'd just like to know, the dynamics have changed radically from two years ago to today, and I think due diligence would say, well, should we rethink this? I don't know. And then, if you say no conversions are happening, then obviously, we're not helping anybody either, from the business side, so maybe we need to modify from that perspective.
Well, I think, you know, I think if you look at the business of residential hotels, part of the reasons why there aren't any conversions or demolitions is because they're viable businesses. These property owners do very well through these businesses, so again, at this point, we have not had any...
Right, but the intent of the ordinance was to get a better circumstance, a better opportunity for both the tenants and for the...
No, the intent of the ordinance is really status quo. The intent of the ordinance is to preserve the residential hotels. That's the intent of the ordinance. It's not to convert to become something else.
I may need a fuller briefing on this, and maybe we could do that outside here.
We would love to do that.
We don't need to have this public discourse, but it's something I would be interested in taking a look at. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members wishing to be heard? Not, let's please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
As approved, and we will send that like all items forthwith today.
And, Mr. President, the ordinance on that does go over...
I'm sorry, since it is an ordinance, it doesn't pass today. That'll be on a second reading, that'll carry over till September 1st. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, is item 29, and that was called special for an amendment that has been distributed to the council members.
Nobody wishes to be heard on that? It's been circulated. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Item approved. Next item, please.
Next item is item 31, and that was called special with Councilmember Weesar.
Okay, Councilmember Weesar, we have item number 31 for us. Mr. Weesar?
So, there's a lot of reasons.
Mr. Weesar, we have item number 31 for us. This is the item on the AB 1290 money transfer for the...
Thank you, Mr. President. We submitted an amended motion, I believe. And we could hold this item on the desk, please. We have an amended motion.
Okay. We have that distributed. Next item, please, is item 40, I think, Mr. Weesar. Mr. Parks also called that special for you on item number 40. That is a tracked map, I believe, or a...
Send this item back to Plumb. There's been some issues raised, and we wanted to ensure that the issues raised by the local community are addressed, and if we could have this item sent back to Plumb, please.
Since the council asserted jurisdiction, the time will run out in that period, that we would be gone on this item. So, why don't we hold that on the desk for a second? We can maybe talk about the timeline on that. I think that we'll hold that on the desk for now. Next item called special, please.
Item number 43, and that was called special by Councilmember Han.
Yeah, Ms. Han, Janice Han, we have item number 43.
You know, I called this special, and I didn't know if we wanted anybody at the, would you gentlemen like to be at the table to talk about this? You know, this is about imposing a fee for a revocable permit if restaurants would like to use the public right-of-way, the sidewalks, for outdoor dining. I have some issues with this. I understand that it has been proposed for, I think, three years now, but it's sort of been lagging somewhere in the city, so it wasn't like it was just thought of. But I will tell you, I can just think of an example in downtown San Pedro, where we have just created an arts and entertainment district. Our goal is to actually have the restaurants put their chairs and tables out on the sidewalk, be more pedestrian-friendly, kind of encourage people to come to downtown San Pedro. I think this is the wrong time to be then slapping on yet another fee for restaurants to do this. I think it would be a disincentive to do it. I understand now, they are required to have a revocable permit if they choose to do this, but I just think it sends a wrong message, so I would wonder if we could maybe send it back to committee and think about this a little bit more. Have we heard from the business community? But if this were taken up for a vote today, I would absolutely vote no on it. I understand, we're trying to raise fees, because I know, again, that there is some work for our department to handle this, but man, if I was a restaurant who's already struggling during this economy, and I was trying to do something more creative and put my chairs and tables out on the sidewalk, and the city is going to come by and slap me with a $300 fee, I think I would either do it on the sly or, you know, not do it at all. And I just think that's the wrong message we want to send right now. We want to encourage restaurants to stay open, we want to help them, and if allowing them to put their tables and chairs on a sidewalk for a more European feel, or à la Larchmont Boulevard, if that's what we want to do, I think there's better ways for us to do this, and I'd like to send it back to committee. If I don't have the support of the rest of the council, I'm going to vote no on this.
I'll vote second.
Thank you, okay. Just, I think it's the wrong time to do this. If you want to hear from staff, to give me your reason, I think we ought to send this back to committee. I think it's the wrong time to do this to our restaurants. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, we do have a second on that. Anybody else wishing to be heard on this item? Mr. Parks, did I press your button? I think Mr. Parks invited this staff up on this.
Oh, no, no, I just, I wouldn't want to... I would just like to know the rationale and how we got here.
Thank you, Councilman Christopher Westhoff, Public Works General Counsel for the city. As Councilwoman pointed out, this matter has been sort of circulating for a number of years, and it emanated from a complaint that was received on a couple of restaurants that exist on Melrose Avenue. This, there have been revocable permits required of all restaurants that wish to encroach in the public... in the public right-of-way since this program was developed over 20 years ago. The president, then-president of the Board of Public Works, Maureen Kendall, had a couple of restaurants in Westwood that wanted to do sidewalk dining, and we developed the revocable permit process to allow those restaurants, again, to try and create the ambiance on city streets. What this particular ordinance would do is to amend the existing ordinance, which would require a re-permitting every two years, so that the restaurants who have a revocable permit would then be re-inspected to ensure that they were in compliance with all of the terms and conditions of the revocable permit that has to be issued for them to even encroach into the public right-of-way for sidewalk dining. And what ends up happening sometimes is that restaurants will add more tables than they're permitted to add, or they will put permanent blockages of the sidewalk as little pony walls to sort of set off the tables, or add umbrellas, and our inspectors have no funding to go out and re-inspect. And this would require a re-inspection every two years by city staff to ensure that the restaurants were in compliance with all of the terms and conditions of their permits. Because what happens now is that the only way that street use inspection and/or the Bureau of Engineering reviews a revocable permit is based on a complaint-by-complaint basis.
So, let me just ask, so the ordinance is in place now, they're allowed to do it, they pay a fee to do it, is the issue of the enforcement is what this ordinance does?
Correct. It's a re-inspection, in essence, it would, every two years, it would require a re-inspection of the restaurant to ensure that their sidewalk dining was still in compliance with all the terms and conditions of it. Because again, we get complaints on a fairly regular basis about restaurants that either do not have a revocable permit, or who have expanded their sidewalk dining, or are blocking the sidewalk, not complying with ADA requirements, and this would allow staff to go out and re-inspect every two years to bring them back into compliance.
Then my assumption is that the fee, is that a full-cost recovery fee, is that--
It is only cost recovery for both the Bureau of Engineering, which must check that they have insurance, and the Bureau of Street Services, which has to send out the street use inspector in order to, again, check against the permit conditions to ensure that the restaurants were in compliance.
And then how much is that fee?
It's $300 every two years is the proposed fee, and this and that is strictly cost--
What is the amount for the initial fee?
Now, the initial fee is $1,200, I believe.
$1,200 to get the permit?
Correct.
And now it's $300 for every two years to inspect?
Every two years, correct.
And what is the process of the inspection, physical inspection, and then what is it, to review records in two different departments?
It is anticipated that a street use inspector would go out to the location with a copy of the revocable permit from the database and check how many tables, what type of other, you know, planters, umbrellas were allowed in the permit, and if there is something that doesn't jive with the permit, they either have to apply for modification of the permit or bring their sidewalk dining into compliance with what was agreed to in the permit.
So this is somewhat like the conditions we place on liquor stores and other things, to just, that we go back and inspect them, as opposed to wait for the complaint?
It is a re-inspection fee, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Alakon?
Members, I'm scrambling as we speak, because when, in Mr. Rosendahl's absence, I was the vice-chair of the committee, and the recommendation from staff in Bill Rosendahl's office was to approve this item, and following his lead, I did so. I have no problem with sending it back to committee, give us an opportunity to have the chairman present, and I'll refocus and take another look at this, if that's the pleasure of the council. I think, however, it seemed to be a reasonable item that we create a revocable permit. I can tell you, I remember, the only part of the discussion I remember in detail was when I asked if it applied to the mobile restaurants that are emerging all over, and in fact, one parked in front of my house and had chairs and dining tables in the easement in front of my house.
How was the food?
I didn't try it, although I was tempted, I admit. No, I asked them to leave, and did they realize this was the city councilman's house, and they left, after waiting for their husbands for two hours, and it was not pretty seen. But I wasn't focused on the fee when I did do this at Mr. Rosendahl's request. So I'd be happy to reconsider it, there may be a more reasonable fee that we can come up with or something, but it is a problem in some cases, and not a problem in others. Where it isn't a problem, we shouldn't put additional burdens, where it is a problem, we should. And I think we may need to focus on where the problem is exactly, and try to put the burden on that problem, not on people who are otherwise doing very good things for the city of Los Angeles. So I would recommend with Janice Han that we do send this back to committee.
Mr. LeBons?
On Larchmont, which Ms. Han mentioned there, as I said, there are 17 locations that have permits, that means that's $5100, but what if you did it just once? And why do two people have to do, why does engineer have to do it, and why does Public Works have to do it?
Engineering just checks that--
Yeah, I know, but why do they have to do that? We have technology now.
They have to check for insurance, they have to check that the insurance is still valid, they are not doing a physical inspection, they're going through, they're only getting a little--
I think we need to iron it out, that's $5100 for one block, you know, but also, we should look at it. Thank you, Ms. Han, for allowing this motion to go back, thank you.
Ms. Han?
And again, I think the $300 for the re-inspection, again, every two years, it just seems like one more thing we're handing to businesses who are really struggling, and it doesn't seem like if we're inspecting them every two years, it's going to really solve some of the complaints that we're getting. It seems to me, and I know, Bill, you were telling me how neighborhood councils could be involved in this, I was also thinking downtown bids could probably help assist us in some of this information, particularly, I'm thinking of the restaurants in downtown San Pedro that are doing this or want to do this, we can really, I think, engage the chambers, the downtown bids, the neighborhood councils, to help us out with some of this information. We have a volunteer workforce out there in the city, and I think these are times when we need to begin looking at people who also have a stake in their neighborhoods, and also have a reason to want to make sure things are handled properly. So let's send it back to committee, let's look at some of those ideas, but at this time, I just think an extra 300 is a little too much for businesses that are struggling. Thank you.
That's it? Mr. Parks, all right, nobody else on the queue, we do have a motion to--
I'm trying to balance it out.
To send that back to committee, without objection, that will be the order then.
Thank you. Can I introduce a great group right here?
Absolutely.
Please welcome, from our sister city of Guangzhou, China, a delegation as they represent Jeffrey Chang, our chair of Guangzhou's sister city since 1981, I say xie xie.
Thank you very much, and welcome, it's a pleasure to have you here in our council chambers, and great to have our sister city here with us very much. Thank you, we look forward to the visit, I know the mayor is coming as well, we're very much honored to have his visit, so thank you, and we will look forward to seeing you soon. All right, next item, did we have the item circulated, the amendment for item 31 yet?
No, not yet.
Okay, we're still waiting on that, Mr. Weezaar, the item 31 amendment. And let's go then to the next item called special.
Next item is 45, and that was called special for cards.
Okay, Mr. Zuma Dogg in Van Nuys? Okay, he's no longer there, we'll close the hearing on that item, and please open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
We have Mr. Dogg had cards in for 48 and 49 as well, so if he's not there, let's go ahead and take those up. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, those are approved, next item called special?
Item 47, called special for cards.
Okay, item 47, John Walsh? And then, oh, he's, sorry, that's the only card for this one, item 47. Good morning.
Good morning, animal liberation, this is the card HollywoodHighlands.org, tomorrow, sex in the city, revelations, not BS, revelations. Ladies and gentlemen, the pachyderms are innocent victims. When the pachyderms are righteous and strike back, scream, they are drugged. The pachyderms spend no money. In other words, they're innocent, drugged victims. The pachyderms are much like those that were the prey of Building and Safety, Andy Edelman, who was charged, but there's a big difference between Andy Edelman and the elephants. Andy Edelman is paid, and the elephants go for free.
Thank you.
Constantly, constantly, this man interrupts me.
We have this Los Angeles Zoo Pachyderm Forest Exhibition before us now, any members wishing to be heard on this? Not, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved, next item, please.
Next item is item 53, and that was called special for cards.
All right, Mr. Walsh, would you like to come forward on item 53, and then we have Dr. Clyde Williams as well? And this is on the Community Forest Advisory Committee, if we can keep our comments focused on--
You know, you have a nerve in this item, read the items, read 23, incidentally. 53 says that LA is an urban forest. Does anyone believe that LA is an urban forest? Yes, it is true that it is dangerous as a forest, as Little Red Riding Hood, which I've read many times in my quarter of a century as a public school teacher, kindergarten teacher, students, one quarter of a century, and still working. There are wolves in the forest that attack females--
Sir--
And, you know what comes next?
Mr. Walsh?
The head of building safety--
You're now being unduly repetitive, and not--
Act your behind, you sexist!
Dr. Clyde Williams is our next speaker, and that will be your last comments for the day, thank you, Mr. Walsh.
Good morning. You're welcome, too. My name is Dr. Clyde Williams, 40115 Barrow Road, El Sereno, Northeast LA, not 710. CFAC, well, one of the things in CFAC is that they don't have enough members, because the CDs do not appoint adequate numbers of representatives to the CFAC. Why not? I don't know, maybe the neighborhood councils could do a better job, maybe tree peoples could do a better job, maybe Northeast Trees could do a better job than the city council representatives, because they have insufficient numbers. However, they are also reviewing the brush clearance requirements of the LA Fire Department before they review the lock clearance requirements of the Public Works. So why do they play in somebody else's sandbox before they clean up theirs? LA Audubon Society Conservation Committee has been monitoring them, and also the Fire Department, regarding the bird requirements of the California Department of Fish and Game, which are not implemented in any of the clearance requirements. Oh, also, Million Trees, we're not going to make the Million Trees, because we're only planting 16,000 a year, whereas we need 20,000 a year to be implemented. So CFAC, does it have any responsibility through the Urban Forest Group of the Public Works? Replacements, they need more replacements. Supposedly, Public Works, Street Services notifies the CFAC of all tree removals, however, they don't. Supposedly, they notify neighborhood councils, but they don't. They post a tree and hope that nobody will look at it, as they did on Avenue 56, so give CFAC some more people, please, it's your responsibility.
Thank you, Dr. Williams, that will close our public comment for this item, please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved, we can take up item 59. Let's vote on 67 as well, please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
59, Mr. Sacks, would you like to come forward?
Mr. President, before I address this item, I hope you're going to reopen item 46, I did put a card in on that. It's good to see that the Public Works Department here is going to consider this Moore Park street widening, and now, the even better news, since the state legislation did not take the gas tax from the city of LA, and the council members were so outraged that this would happen, they were ready to sue, that if the city lost this tax money, then Public Works efforts for a street widening or sidewalks would not be able to happen. But since they didn't take the gas tax, I'm sure that if you go online, you'll be able to find a list of projects that are already being shovel-ready. They've got the shovel, and you know where they're going to stick it. Thank you.
We don't have a card, sir, for 46, I think we have one for 64, were you confused about the two? We have 64, not 46.
46.
We don't have a card, and we voted on that before, I'm sorry.
I wanted one on 46.
Okay, I promise you, we don't have a card for that one, my apologies. And we voted on that, so let's prepare the roll on this and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, that is approved. Have we, do we have the 29 circulated, or sorry, 31?
I don't believe so.
Any motion circulated?
If we could call 31 and continue that till Friday, we have some corrections to make on the amendment--
All right, without objection, we'll continue that to the 14.
31 to Friday, yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weezaar, and on item 40, have we worked out, or you want to continue to hold that?
We're ready, if you--
To vote?
To vote, yes, and I'd like to speak on that, please.
Okay, please, go ahead, Mr. Weezaar.
Thank you, if I could call the city attorney up, please, for, thank you. Thank you very, very much. Colleagues, this is an item that we sectioned 245, because we wanted to clarify some issues that could essentially have been an oversight from the city itself in our processes, and so I wanted to ask the city attorney to come up as to the recommendation that she has, that the city attorney's office has on, our intent is to approve the Plum recommendation, however, you wanted us to add an amendment to that.
That's correct, Terry Kaufman, M.C., City Attorney's Office, what we're recommending the amendment to be is to, should the applicant decide to file a new application for the tentative map, to waive the fees, and to request that the planning department expedite the application with giving all applicable notice and time periods, and that's to correct essentially what happened with this application as it went through the first time, and to correct the mistake that was made at the Area Planning Commission decision.
Thank you very much. So colleagues, what we are essentially doing here is we are denying a project by an applicant, but considering that we did have an oversight with the East Area Planning Commission's decision, we are asking an amendment to waive any fees and to expedite any reapplication that may be made on this project.
Thank you, Mr. Weezaar, if there's no other members, that motion is before us to deny, if we can please open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved.
Thank you.
Okay, we now have closed session items that are before us, if we can please go into closed session now in accordance with California state law, 64 was continued. Sir, we had already said that you're being unduly repetitive and not on topic, so that was the last comments that we were going to have today from you. If you're willing to come up and just speak on public, on the items that are here before us, but if you're repeating about Mr. Edelman, that is not what is before us, you can say that in public comment as much as you want, nobody's censoring that or keeping you from it, but on 67, if you'd like to speak on the special events, you can, but it has to be on special events, one minute.
You're not going to believe this, sidewalk sale in Lincoln Heights, four and a half thousand dollars, everybody watching this, there's 100,000 of you watching this, if you want to have a sale on your sidewalk, it costs nothing, it's called a garage sale. I want an audit, and this is Rayus and Perry, four and a half thousand dollars, block party. I've had block parties, you've had block parties, they cost nothing, $2,200, what city services do they need? What city services do they need? And yesterday, potato salad, over $1,500 for a potluck. Every day in this city, there are hundreds of thousands of potlucks, and they don't cost $1,600. It's paybacks, it's to favored groups. Can you believe it? We can take your three seconds back.
Thank you. That will finish our public comment. If we can open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. We can take up 66, and reconsider that, even though it's a note and file. We'll take the public comment on that as a courtesy. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
All right, Mr. Sax, if you'd like to come forward on 66?
Thank you. I stand corrected. That was the card I put in. I do have a question regarding this ridiculous action that doesn't want to be taken, that does want to be... It states here the city's position on Senate Bill 258 Feinstein, with all the problems that are going on, which seeks to curtail the distribution and use of candy-flavored illegal drugs. Well, if they're illegal drugs, it really doesn't matter what flavor they are. Maybe you might consider what they're packaged as. Maybe there might be an enhancement penalty added to the enforcement code, that if the drugs taste like Wintegreen in next or five years. Or if they're not packaged in a disposable or recyclable plastic bag, they get another five years. What kind of ridiculous legislation is this that considers the flavor of the drugs over the illegality or the legality of the drugs? The question here is, why don't you have a program that discusses legalizing and getting some income for the state broken funding? And another source, people are talking about legalizing marijuana. She's talking about the flavor. So if marijuana was legal, but it had a different flavor, would that make it illegal? Questions, questions, questions. Stay on it, Senator Feinstein.
Mr. Walsh on item 66?
Well, obviously, what this means is candy-type. That's what it means. And yes, unlike some people out here, drugs are the scourge. They want us to take marijuana, so we'll sit there as slaves. Anyone who takes marijuana is a slave. And all these heads and everything, we have the worst marijuana distribution policy in the world. And yes, anyone who sells drugs to a child, and I've taught in this country, in Saudi Arabia, I've taught in Ethiopia children, I've taught people in New York children, I've taught for over 30 years, and I'm telling you, I'm a little different from some of these other people who want to sit around and smoke. I think these people should be put in prison who sell drugs to children disguised as candy.
Thank you. That will close our public comment on this item. It was noted and filed, and it will be noted and filed without objection. We'll now go into closed session to address some litigation. As before, the city of four items. We'll come back into open session in accordance with California State law on any votes that need to be taken openly as well. Thank you. If we can clear the council chambers, we'll come back to adjourn the meeting or take any other votes. Thank you.
...
Welcome back to open session, ladies and gentlemen. Madam Clerk, would you take the open session votes?
Mr. President, before going into the vote, the City Attorney has a finding to read into the record that's applicable to both 69 and 70.
Okay, let's hear that.
My name is Marilyn Garcia. I'm an Assistant City Attorney who's involved in financing work for the city. And in order for the Council to vote approval, if you deem appropriate to do so, on items 69 and 70, it would be necessary for the Council to make certain findings with respect to the possibility of financing the payouts through judgment obligation bonds. Let me emphasize that this is just creating the opportunity in the future to possibly do this, as opposed to foreclose that option. But in no way is the Council approving the financing of the issuance of judgment obligation bonds or the financing of these judgments through that method. The findings with respect to the Bressler and Lima cases, items 70 and 69 on your agenda, would read, "The Council finds that the City intends to make an inter-fund borrowing or advance from Fund 9770 to pay the judgment on an interim basis, which loan or advance will be refunded or reimbursed with the proceeds of a judgment obligation bond issuance." Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Madam Clerk?
And I'm sorry, on the first item, number 69, that's Lima versus City, and that's a judgment in the amount of $4,847,294.64. And just for Council's information, the findings are included in the motion for Council to adopt.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, that is approved. Next item?
Next item is item number 70, and that's a judgment in the case of Bressler versus City, and the amount is $3,335,737.31.
Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved as well. Next item?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Is it posted and referred?
And there's an excuse on the desk. Council of Records requests the excuse Friday, no, excuse me, September 11th, to leave at noon, and Tuesday, September 22nd, to leave at 10:30. A motion is required on the excuse for the 11th.
Now that takes us down to...
Eleven.
Eleven, okay. I'll move that, Ms. Perry, seconds without objection. Be approved.
That clears the desk.
All right, any announcements, business announcements? Do we have any adjourning motions today? Does anybody have any adjourning motions? If not, Madam Clerk, will you please call...